Thanks, Ryan. Your right hand over your heart, ready? Begin.
Councilmember Horneck.
Here.
Councilmember Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember Silva.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sanchez.
Here.
And Mayor King.
Here.
Any reordering of the agenda? None this evening. Okay, I have two public comments. First one I will call up will be John Dorwin.
Thank you, John Dorwin, 104 Six Flags Circle, Buellton, and member of the Rancho de Maria Homeowners Association. Today, there were two large trucks that came down Shadow Mountain to deliver gravel to the project site, which is west of the Rancho de Maria subdivision, common area, and the golf course. To our knowledge, there is, there are no permits for this activity to exist. There's no sixteen oh three permit that's been issued by the California Department of Fish and Wildlife to allow for the bridge construction across Saca Creek. We're unaware of any grading plan, but the real issue is this misuse of access down Shadow Mountain to come in the back way to the property violates the terms and conditions of approval of the tentative parcel map for the HUD project, which we don't believe has been recorded yet. And there are conditions that need to be recorded before that tentative parcel map records. We were assured by the developer that this would not be taking place, and this would not be the access way for the project construction down there between the Rancho de Maria Common Area and Industrial Way. The issue is going to be, what is the mitigation fee for the damage to the public streets and highways for this type of abuse? When you run heavy trucks down these streets, which were not built to code back in nineteen eighty-four, and don't have the requisite base to operate as a highway, you're going to sustain damage. Now, the developers reassured us time and time again that he'll pay for any damage, but now it's happening. So what's the mitigation fee going to be? Is it going to be a hundred dollars per truck per day? It's going to be a thousand dollars per truck per day. What, what is the calculation to mitigate the impact for this developer violating the terms and conditions of the tentative map? Which said, primary access is to be from industrial way, and there will only be incidental access through Shadow Mountain, and it will only be for light duty vehicles. And we interpret that to mean ten thousand pounds or less gross vehicle weight. But when you put the big trucks and the cement trucks and the gravel trucks on these roads, we're going to end up with a mess, and you're going to end up with broken water lines and sewer lines and base that is not going to hold up. Thank you.
Thank you, John. All right, A.J. Tarmann from Pacific Safety Council.
Traffic Safety Squad.
Sorry, traffic.
That was good enough, Mayor. Councilman Sanchez would be happy to hear. I only got one page, not a book. Last time I came in here, he went, oh my God, a book. Anyway, the benefit of being a city gives us local control and lessens the reliance on CHP sheriffs for West two forty-six law enforcement. That's why I'm here talking. Our traffic safety group wants to know how long before we have our own traffic enforcement? How is the motorcycle patrol coming? Something we can do to lower speed limits now. AB forty-three. The council can cut the speed limits down, down, down. What has our city attorney found out? Caltrans has schoolchildren walking signage, and Oak Charter School is within two hundred fifty feet. Pedestrian safety also meets criteria of AB forty-three to cut these speed limits. We call on the council to take action now. Skinning the lanes, as my adept district councilman, Mr. Horneck, indicates, is the best solution to bring this residential highway under control. Please update us as to how your contact with Caltrans is going. We all know Caltrans can take years to alter lanes. However, council should encourage the tripling of sidewalks, bulb bouts, and more now before we have more fatalities. For that reason, we call on council now to cut speed limits and get our black and white out on Highway two forty-six. We really appreciate your action on this. The, the bad driving, I've got to tell you, is coming out of Lompoc. Three in-town fatalities last week. I know of two babies killed there in the last ten months, two sixty-year-olds, and I count seventeen other fatalities in and around Lompoc. The mayor made a good point last week. That's where the commuters, the local people are keeping to speed limits. So thank you for your activity and listening.
Thank you.
Thank you, A.J. I, I would like to just say to A.J., thank you for coming out. Thank you for coming out again. That is something the skinning the lanes or skinnying the two forty-six is something we talk about. I, I spoke about briefly with our mayor earlier this week. So we are hoping to get Caltrans involved as soon as possible, and it means a lot to have you come out and kind of keep the pressure on us for that. Mr. Murphy, I was, I, I believe that I have to recuse myself as to any discussion about the hub, but you can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe.
No, you do. Thank you, sir.
Okay, well, I would just thank my, my neighbor for coming out.
Okay. All right, let's move on to the consent calendar. Minutes of June twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, regular city council meeting. List of plans to be approved and ratified for payment to date for fiscal years twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four. Designation of voting delegate for twenty twenty-three League of California Cities Annual Conference Business Meeting. And Resolution twenty-three seventeen, resolution of the City Council of City of Buellton, California, approving the Second Amendment of the Joint Exercise of Powers Agreement, creating the Central Coast Water Authority and finding such action exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. And before we go on, do you have a problem with being the alternate on that? On the voting? At the league?
No.
Okay.
I thought you were talking about this.
No.
Because I went to one of these meetings today, so that's always.
No, you're right. Just be, just if you, if you don't have a problem, that's fine. Okay, I'd exercise motion.
So much.
A second.
Linda?
Okay, Councilmember Lewis.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Sanchez.
Hi.
Councilmember Horneck.
Hi.
Councilmember Silva.
Hi.
And Mayor King.
Hi. And we have any presentations, Scott? Nope.
We have no presentation.
Okay, public hearings.
Public hearings, yes.
Okay, council member comments and items, like comments or items or meetings that you have been to since our last meeting a month ago. Lisa?
Wouldn't we give that under committee reports on them?
Oh, council items, never mind. No, that would be any items that people have and want to bring back.
Well, I know I asked about this before, but I was going to ask about the draft circulation elements for this getting the two forty-six. I know we talked about essentially bringing that out and separating it from the general plan and, and being able to review that separately.
Yes.
Just going to follow up on that. And then I was going to also follow up the staff about, this is sort of a housekeeping item, but the exchange server that we use to get our email is quite frustrating and outdated, and we cannot access our email without using the Internet Explorer option. And so I would love it if we could assess that, and I believe I'm not alone in that desire.
All right, make a note of that.
Lastly, I was just kind of checking what this has about the speed limit sign on Avenue of Flags. It's not the speed limit sign, but it's the radar telling people to slow down. We were talking about putting some traffic calming measures potentially in between Rancho de Maria and RV flying flags. I believe that is potentially one of those traffic calming device information gathering machines. Is that, is that correct?
Well, the speed sign does gather traffic data as well. Speed limits as well as quantity of vehicles and stuff like that.
Is that, is that, is that what it's for? Is it for potentially getting some traffic calming measures?
It's to get, gather the data so we can review, continue our study.
Okay. Well, the only other thing I was going to mention is the last time we discussed it was that, you know, there is a sort of red and blue flashing light as you go down, and, you know, we just didn't want, if it's going to be accurate information gathering, there is some sort of like.
It's flashing red and blue right now?
If you go too fast. Yeah. So I don't know if people are like going to see that and then slow down and be gathering incorrect information.
Yeah, that shouldn't be doing.
Okay.
That feature should not be on there.
Okay.
That feature was selected for when we had it up for events, but not for
Okay.
just regular.
All right. Date again.
It was on La La La.
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
That was turned on on La La, and we wanted it there to alert people to speed.
Okay, we'll double check that, so.
Thank you.
We'll have to note the date now that when we change it and.
Yeah.
Okay.
Rose, is that certified for like an official traffic speed count? Because I know that usually when Caltrans or any other government agency does it, it has to be like an official with the
Yeah, it's got to be.
distances and the speed and the trips.
Yeah, and be that, have that certification that it was not tuned, but calibrated, calibrated, and it is calibrated.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, okay, because it used to be that it used to have the traps and the official, the speed and all that. Okay. Lisa?
I have a couple things. I just want to reiterate the email thing. I keep getting kicked off, and then it won't work on my phone, then I have to go back online. It's just a
Okay.
It's just a pain in the rear.
All right.
Um, so I would definitely like to look at other options for that. And then I have a couple of people that have come to me that live on, gosh, what is that? It's not Nina. What is the road right before you make a right on Ireland? You can make a right. Dawn, yes. So people that are walking their dogs to the dog park are not cleaning up their waste, particularly on that that track. I mean, it happens in front of my house often, too. Are there, like, is it possible for the city to put in some of the dog waste, the little posts with the dog wasting maybe at that corner? Or both of those corners, as those are kind of the main thoroughways up to the dog park? It might help mitigate that for those who forget to.
We, we can take a look at that. I'll, I'll get with you offline here. We'll figure out what locations we're talking about. I'll sit down with Rose, we'll figure out what's available.
Or some other maybe signage or something, something just to kind of help the residents particularly on that
Right.
that kind of path. And then I was just wondering if we could get an update on the playground in Vineyard Village? Um, where we were at with that. I think we picked plans, and I was just like, we picked plans, are we going out for bid or I don't?
Yes, we're, we're going out for informal bid for that, and those documents are still being prepared right now. Anticipate going, it going out in the next couple of weeks with bid opening like mid to end August, and then it should go to you guys the first meeting in September.
Thank you.
All right, let's start the list on this one. So I did want to just, I don't know who would be the follow-up for it, but from the public comment about the concerns on the hub project, who would be just for our information to educate? Who would we talk to about that so that we knew what that was?
I, I would suggest contacting me.
Okay.
And then if, if there are specific issues that I'm not aware of, I can direct you to the proper staff person.
Perfect. There's one. So then I did want to also say if we can get in the, the line for the trailer for McMurray for the speeding situation, I don't know if there's, I mean, I guess we can only have one trailer going at an active time slash private budgetary reasons.
Unless you want to buy another one. We can, we only have one. That's, that's our, that's our limitation right now.
A deep sigh there.
And they're not, no.
Okay, so could we get in line for that if that's okay?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Great.
It'll be a little bit longer since now I've got, didn't realize the flashing beacons were on that, so the data would, would not be useful to us. I mean, it'll be, we can still use it, but we can't use it officially.
On McMurray, if you wouldn't mind. But then I just want to, I mean, for the sake of knowledge and knowing that we have two large highways in our area, and it seems like a lot of speeding concerns, would we ever be willing to discuss what it would look like to have a second one?
That's, that's up to the council.
Yeah, and I mean, I'm saying that in a rhetorical way without making eye contact.
It's about twenty to twenty-five thousand.
Yeah.
For one.
How effective are they for us? Like, are we noticing that they make a difference in being used versus putting that twenty-five thousand towards maybe hours for another motor car? Or something to that effect?
I, I will say that the feedback I received from our motor officer prior to his departure last year was that it was very effective at, at alerting people. Not quite as effective as having a motor officer there, but it is effective. And twenty-five thousand dollars would, wouldn't cover ten percent of what it costs for a motor officer for a year. So, yeah, it would be it, it's, it's not out of the question to have two of them, and it could be very effective, but I will note that, yes, we have two cities running through, but the, the, one of the primary locations we have speed concerns is Highway two forty-six, and we can't place enough.
Oh, yeah, I just, I would say that I think commute is, commuters and truck transportation are like one of the peak concerns we always have in the city, and so just it may be worthwhile to consider being able to do two things at once.
Sure. We, we certainly have a, a couple of events every year where we get requests for them. Yeah, for, and more than one would be beneficial, but there is, there is a hefty price tag on it.
Okay, so I'm just putting, I don't, are we willing to discuss it?
I'm definitely going to.
We can bring it up at another meeting.
If, if you'd like, we can bring it back up.
Okay, I just didn't know if we had to have a full, like, yes, are we going to bring it up at another meeting?
Yeah. Yeah, if there's consensus, we'll schedule it to be brought back at a future meeting.
Thank you. All right. Um, then this will be, I know we have our updates from the committees, but one of the things that we did do, I got to experience with some of you with riding bikes, and something that came up with that is that as we talk about bikes as an alternate transportation element, there isn't necessarily bike racks and locking spaces. I think of like our recreational areas. I think of Vineyard Village Park. So I was just wondering if we could maybe have a investment or look into if we're going to continue to encourage bicycle transportation, we may want to look into. There may be bike racks. I just can't recall where they are, but I'm just saying we may want to have a moment to discuss, like, where were we, like, in our shopping centers and areas of high traffic? Of that, so that people are, if, if we build it, they will come, at least from that security standpoint.
Can I ask a question about that? Isn't, that is in our draft circulation element, though, isn't it? I mean, that's, we, there's a whole bike and pedestrian plan with, with outlines.
There, there is.
Bike racks and where they should go.
Typically, without getting too far into it, there, we typically address those things through development requests. We will, would require bike racks to be installed. But we do have locations in the city here where bike racks are not, if, if they're existing, they're not readily apparent. So if you'd like to have that brought back as a discussion item, we can, we can bring that back as well.
I'm sorry, I was, I'm sorry, Scott. If we would like, what brought back the visibility of them?
The issue of, of adding bicycle racks in various locations around the city.
Okay, but there is, I mean, I remember seeing, I forget what portion of our, of our documentation, is it the general plan or is it the draft circulation element they have?
The circulation element, we, we have an existing circulation element, and it would be in the draft circulation element of the specific plan does address policies regarding encouragement for, of the use of bicycles.
Okay, and, and rack placement and like high thoroughfare stuff, right? The whole point of it, right?
Yeah, I mean, the, it, 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 the, 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 the circulation element is intended to address all forms of circulation and transportation, so not just motor vehicles, but public, you know, public motor vehicle transportation, bicycles, pedestrian circulation, all of those things enter into it. And so the bike racks are a part of the of the, the policies that the city would establish to encourage that kind of, the use of those vehicles.
Main reason it came up was just, we went to Na Na Thai and then had to park in ways that didn't impose on other right, like businesses. And so it just seemed like an interesting thing where it was like, this is blatantly something that maybe we should look into if we're going to continue to encourage that. So that's just where that's coming from.
I agree.
Right, I'm, I'm running through, I'm running through, I promise.
No, you're fine. I'm just going to say the electric, and with more people getting electric bikes, they're very expensive, and I'm sure they do not want to get them stolen.
Right, yeah.
I have to say, my son rides them to Albertson's and, you know, out to get food, but I'm like, don't leave it alone, don't leave it out there. Make sure, like, it's hard to do anything because someone has to stay with the bike.
I went through three bikes at UCSB. I understand. Yeah, so, and then just wanted to, the two other items, one was, it's with it being a new fiscal year, and I don't know if this is something we've done readily, but I wasn't sure if we could look at the holiday calendar of what the city observes for the upcoming year. I know that we've haven't, I don't know when the last time that was revisited, but I think about the fact that with our community, I think of like, why, you know, Caesar Chavez Day is something that we have a, maybe we want to consider or things of that where the city has values of observance that we haven't discussed yet. So I was hoping we could maybe take a look at what our holiday of what the city observes as holidays is of willingness of the council.
The, the observance of holidays is, is something that's addressed in the city's municipal code. And as such, it would require an ordinance be adopted to make that change. And as with anything like that, if the council would like to see that discussion happen, direction to staff would allow us to bring that back to you.
Are we willing to talk about that?
I was happy to talk.
Yeah.
Okay.
And are you talking about just the formal observance of or doing some sort of recognition of?
I think that, I mean, I, I would, I was starting with just a city's values are shown in what it observes, in my opinion. And so I think observing holidays as a city separate from, which is the next point, is to raise awareness that September is National Hispanic Heritage Month. And I think, again, as we have a large Latinx population, we may want to look into what that would look like for the city to observe that and recognize that, since I think that's important for our communities. A hush falls over the crowd. Guys, I keep going with, are we willing to talk about that?
I personally don't think that we have to pay for another day to ever, but it's nice. They can do whatever we can have.
Oh, separate things. There's one, it's just the calendar, and then there's.
Talking about giving the day off. That's why we discuss it. You want to put it on the agenda for discussion, let's be honest.
Yeah, so and there's one is the holiday calendar, and then two is recognizing September as National Hispanic Heritage Month, since that it would be more of like a city proclamation situation, I think, where we are recognizing that.
Isn't it already federal?
As are other things. But I know that there are multiple events that take place. I know Solving has an event, and I believe Buellton, they're looking at doing one in Buellton of recognizing the month. And so I think that if there is a call from communities to celebrate heritage, and it's taking place in our own backyard, it seems kind of remiss to not recognize it formally and show we support those types of causes.
Ha, happy to talk about it.
Yeah.
Both items.
Okay.
I'm gonna go no with John on that one. John's a no on that.
Okay.
What's next?
I'm out. That's all I got.
I, I did sort of think of something else while, while Alicia was talking. I know that Rancho de Maria subdivision is slated for repavement this year. Do we know when that's going to begin?
That project is out to bid right now. We have a bid opening set for August eighth. So the contract will go to council for award, the first meeting in September. So usually within like a month of that award, we do our contracts, we do our kickoff meeting. And we'll start, so probably end of September.
Some neighbors and I were discussing the speed humps, and you know, the concern of traffic, especially particularly around Zaca. Some neighbors and I were discussing the speed humps and, you know, the concern of traffic, especially particularly around Zaka preschool. Um, and also any construction that comes down, uh Shetland Mountain. If the road is being repaved, I noticed that Solving, you know, they 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 increased the height of their speed humps, and I wasn't sure if 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 the repayment of the speed humps would in be increased at all, or if they're going to stay the same, or how that works. If that's part of any bid project, um if it's not, you know, I'm just, this is more of an information gathering question.
The speed humps will remain the same because the project is a slurry seal, so that adds, won't add any amount to the height of the speed humps.
Okay, okay. If if there was like something council wanted to do, is that something we could change and not affect a bit, or that is it too late to do that?
It it would not be part of this project.
Okay.
It would have to be done at a later time.
It was a separate thing.
Nothing to this time. All hope for committee reports.
Okay.
Uh, any written communications?
No, sir.
Uh, then now we will move on to committee reports, Alicia.
Yeah, I attended the JPIA annual board members meeting in I forget where it is in LA.
La Palma.
La Palma, yes. Um, it's always very nice venue, it's great meeting other city council members and um city managers and that type of thing. We elected new executive board members and got uh an update from their new CEO on kind of the direction of the organization for the next year or two. So, we have a good meeting.
That's it. John? Yeah, yeah. Within the CCWA meeting this morning. And uh again, the water situation is very good. We're trying to find places to put the extra water, so that's a good thing. And then uh SBK meeting, then uh they had a big um a big reception in Montecito on Monday, which I couldn't make, I would like to go. I don't know if anybody else went to that. It was just uh you come in writing the completion of that section of one-on-one and uh mostly to have a picture of a check, I think is what's a big deal.
Yeah, so there wasn't a decision of awarded like hundred and twenty-three million dollars?
Yeah. Yeah.
Was that for that? We know. I saw the news press, news release.
I think it's a hundred and thirty-four for that part of the projects is what we acquired for the the rest of the um construction down on the one-on-one. I mean, what's it been, six years since they started that?
That's a ton of money.
So yeah, you know, and 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 some of its funding, you know, and where the funding's coming from and acquiring it and such. So in some of the subsequent meetings to the one John went to, we acquired a lot of money to get that done. It needs to be done.
Uh, attended the green team meeting, and there was a conversation just kind of about electrification of grids and um primarily from a like a not an agriculture, what's landscaping perspective? And then there was the conversation for the EZ bike. So thank you to SP CAG for putting that on and having that Friday experience and learning how much I'm scared, but enjoying bike rides. It was terrifyingly fun, felt alive again. So um thank you for all the coordination with that and for the city to be supportive of that. And then um attended today a the Affordable Housing Task Force. Is that the type of group? Task group. A housing task group. Force. Um anyway, and so they had a lot, there was just a conversation about all the different projects taking place in the county for um affordable housing at low and very low. And um it was Polo Village is a highly celebrated achievement for the county in their minds with everything going on. And then um just kind of an update of where all the housing's going. And the fact that Beelton was the only city who could say proudly that they were in compliance at the degree that we are. I think it was interesting to hear, we take for granted what our planning commissions or planning department is achieving. And so thank you. Because we were the only city who was like, we're doing pretty good. Only have like one edit, and we're in like all that. So thank you very much. It was a showcase of how well the city's being run from us from a planning perspective. So thank you.
Do we know if our uh housing element has been approved yet?
It has not. We are in what we hope to be our final phase of of review, and I hope our planning director hopes to hear something next week, so.
For reference, we were at like one-ish change, and some were referencing seventeen to twenty-five that they're still
Oh, I'm familiar with the drama, yeah.
So, way to go.
Wheels turn slowly.
Okay, the only thing really that I can think of that I went to is Scott and I attended the change of command ceremony out of Vandenberg Air Force Base. And there was a lot of pomp and circumstance and speechifying and saluting. But there is a new commander now. His first name is Shoemaker Steven. I know it's Shoemaker.
Yeah.
Shoemaker is the new commander out there. Okay, let us move on to business items, and we have a presentation by Central Coast Community Energy. And this will be Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. As you will recall, in uh January of last year, uh the city became a member agency of the Central Coast Community Energy. The CCA for the um uh for the our region. Uh, tonight we have Judy Young from uh Three CE, who is here to give us the annual report. Uh, there's no action required on this report. It's simply, uh, it's a receive and file on your part. Uh, if you have any questions, now's the time to ask after she gives her presentation. So, all right, call this up real quick and make sure the screen and go.
Is there a remote for the slides?
There's not, but if you want to say beep, I will be happy to. Okay, just just a second. Let me see if I can find this here. You, your screen. Okay, I think we're good.
Okay, good. Well, thank you, Mayor, council members and city staff. My name is Judy Young, and I am the Senior Member Agency Account Manager with Three CE. Is this one?
Yes.
Um, it's my honor to be here tonight to highlight Central Coast Community Energy's recent accomplishments as well as our plans for twenty twenty-three and beyond. I will start with a brief introduction to the Community Choice Aggregation Model for anyone who is new to CCAs and how the CCA model differs from the investor-owned utility model. Then I will highlight Central Coast Community Energy's history and role in your community. So, once a community signs on to a CCA, the CCA takes over electricity procurement, while the existing investor-owned utility continues to handle transmission, transmission, distribution and billing. CCAs are public agencies and return revenue to their communities in the form of programs, incentives and rebates, and can also assist with local job creation and renewable energy development. Our agency has seen tremendous expansion since we formed in twenty seventeen. We expanded from Monterey Bay to the entire Central Coast, and your community joined in twenty twenty-two. At the end of twenty twenty-two, Three CE was made up of thirty-four member agencies throughout the five counties, serving nearly four hundred and fifty thousand customers and securing over one billion dollars in renewable energy and storage agreements, while returning twenty-six million dollars to our communities. Since that time, our member agencies have grown to thirty-five, and our investment has more than doubled. Over ninety-four percent of utility customers in our communities are enrolled with Three CE, and in the city of Beelton, it is over ninety-seven percent. And in the year twenty twenty-two alone, we delivered over five thousand gigawatt hours of electricity throughout our region. Also, in the last year and a half, we enrolled the community of Beelton, your community, completed enrollment of unincorporated regions of Santa Barbara County, and welcomed the cities of Atascadero and the county of Slow as our newest communities. So there's a lot of news to report, and I will focus it on the four major benefit areas promised to you when we formed, when you joined in twenty twenty-two, starting with local control. Community Choice Aggregation allows local government to have greater control over the type and cost of energy supplied to their communities to ensure energy sources and rates reflect the community's values and goals. With Three CE, decisions about where your power comes from and how you are charged for it are made by local elected officials. We are making progress on climate goals together as a region, and we are far ahead of both state and federal targets to decarbonize our energy supply. Here in Beelton, you share board seats with Solving in Guadalupe and are represented by Solving's Claudia Arona and Randy Murphy. And I believe Councilmember Silva will be joining our policy board next year. Is that correct?
Right, yeah, I think, yeah, that sounds right.
Terrific. Um, so now let's talk about rates. In March of twenty twenty-two, we decoupled our rates from PG and Es and established our own rate-setting procedures based on cost of service, resulting in an average of about eighteen percent savings for residential customers. Small and medium commercial customers save between two and nineteen percent during the year twenty twenty-two. Once we switched to cost of service, and we expect our competitiveness with the incumbent utility to continue. As you can see, we have work to keep our service affordable for our communities. Now I will shift focus to our efforts to procure clean power. So today we are at about fifty percent clean and renewable and on track to be at sixty percent by the year twenty twenty-five, which is five years ahead of the goal set by the state of California. Our strategy commits Three CE to meet one hundred percent of its demand with clean and renewable resources by the year twenty thirty, with balancing on a monthly basis, which is a full fifteen years ahead of the goal set by the state of California. Three CE is also pursuing offshore wind generation and emerging technology in California. The auction for leases in federal waters off the Central Coast in December twenty twenty-two was an important step in bringing these resources online. In order to achieve these goals, Three CE's procurement team has prioritized, yes, thank you, has prioritized long-term contracts that bring new clean resources online as quickly as possible. To date, Three CE has executed nineteen long-term power purchase agreements and energy storage agreements. Five of these projects came online in twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, and add up to nearly two hundred and eighty megawatt of generation and energy storage combined, or about twenty-two percent of our annual load. Meeting greenhouse gas reduction goals is also about electrification. As individuals, the biggest impact we can make to cut greenhouse gas emissions and improve air quality is to replace fossil fuel vehicles with EVs and replace the gas appliances in our homes. As Three CE works to clean the grid, electric cars and appliances will be emission-free in their operation, and the electricity that powers them will be one hundred percent clean and renewable. And the final Three CE commitment I am reporting on tonight is a continued investment in your community and all of the communities in our service area. So this Yep, this slide shows what we have accomplished over the last year. And looking more broadly, over the past three years, Three CE has helped put more than one thousand new and used vehicles on Central Coast roads by distributing more than two million dollars in cash rebates paid directly to our customers. By electrifying our transportation sector, these EVs have spared more than six thousand metric tons of regional CO2 emissions. Additionally, in collaboration with funding partners like the California Energy Commission, Three CE has delivered rebates that will help build more than one thousand new EV charging stations in our region. We've also paid to make more than two thousand new affordable housing units all-electric, and that support continues. Residential customers within the city of Beelton are eligible for rebates up to four thousand dollars for EVs and chargers and toward replacing certain gas-powered appliances. We also have programs aimed at helping our member agencies advance electrification and stay up to date with building codes that advance electrification. And we have business-friendly programs designed to electrify new housing, including farmworker housing, to upgrade ag equipment and to install DCFC level-three chargers. With an eye to equity, coupled with an awareness that many of these enhancements are out of reach for underserved communities, we provide an additional underserved communities.
Cool.
There you go. We provide an additional one thousand dollar Electrify Your Ride and Electrify Your Home rebate for income-qualified customers. And in partnership with the state, Three CE has garnered over twenty-eight thousand dollars for your community in the year twenty twenty-two alone. If you're interested in rebates and incentives, there's a page on our website. Please uh take a look there for information and to apply. And finally, with the continued support of the city of Beelton, staff, council and community, along with the rest of our communities, Three CE will continue to deliver innovative solutions, impactful programs and exemplary service, along with clean and renewable energy. This concludes my presentation. I thank you for your time, and I'm available for any questions.
All right, thank you.
I was just gonna ask about your um your rebate or your incentive programs. Just tried to pull it up online, but uh maybe you could tell us a little bit about those.
Uh, so we, for residential, commercial, member agency. So we have Electrify Your Ride. Those funds are available uh for residence and commercial. Um, you'll see the uh rebate amounts here on the screen. Um, Electrify Your Home is residential. There's also a similar building um rebate program for commercial. Um, new construction electrification. Uh, you can see their ADUs by really popular five thousand dollars if you make yours all-electric and don't have a gas hookup to your ADU. Um, are you interested in the member agency programs? So we have Charge Your Fleet, Electrify Your Fleet and Plan Your Fleet. So this is all around transportation, uh fleet electrification. These are funds available to our member agencies. We also, and Plan Your Fleet, we just launched and it's it's was constructed uh because that's what our member agencies told us they needed. Uh, how do we even get started with electrifying? That's what Plan Your Fleet does for you. We have um retained a consultant who will take a look at every, at your use case, you know, what what vehicles do you have, what miles do you drive, um, where do they park at night? And um can help pull together a uh uh an electrification plan for that fleet. Um, be- before there's any vehicles purchased or chargers even even um planned for. So the Plan Your Fleet is a is a really um helpful, I believe, program. And then we have the Reach Code Program for our member agencies, which um is again handled by an outside consultant and can help um take a look at your community and um and devise a reach code that can help um bring electrification into Beelton. All of our rebates, if you go to threece.org, there is a an incentives, I believe, or rebates um menu item, and then everything is listed under, under that.
Thank you. Um, it's uh it's basically two hundred to four hundred percent of the federal poverty level. Is that correct?
That's for the um additional thousand dollar um for income qualified, yes. There's two, there's two buckets there. Um, two different levels of additional funding. Um, tier one is four hundred, two hundred to four hundred, tier two is less than two hundred percent.
Good, thank you.
And depending on the program, uh that determines what additional monies would be available.
Thank you.
Um, the only question I had is um with, I see, I know that there's the procurement, and then there's the delivery separates. That's, you know, the the, I just was wondering with the project programs you have, from a resilience of grid standpoint, is that a discussion that you have the entire time? Because I know that like, as we adopt new kind of green energy-focused pieces, I was just wondering if you could just speak a little bit to
Resilience.
Exactly, just to appease customers who would be like, how will, you know, is this gonna be safe long-term in terms of like functionally keeping the lights on?
Right, right. Well, what, it's it's really interesting to me. I've been with the agency ten months now, so I've actually seen um and and uptick in the number of discussions around storage, even just since I started. So storage is becoming increasingly important um to, I think it's called hardening the grid, keeping it up. Obviously, wind and solar are plentiful, plenty, there's a lot of availability in the middle of the day. There's nothing at nine PM and or or two in the morning. And so storage is really becoming increasingly important. And uh one of the there there was a press release we did a few months back where we signed uh a power purchase agreement for compressed air storage, the largest uh project planned yet in the world, and we get to be part of it and participate in that storage. So um I think the answer to the question about resili- resiliency is storage, storage, storage. Um I think the answer to the question about resili- resiliency is storage, storage, storage. Um and we're seeing um even in for commercial and residential, a lot more storage options available. So people who are putting. Rooftop solar on can now do a power wall or storage in their own house, um can fill that battery up. During the middle of the day and and um use it all night long and then fill it up again the next day. So. That would be my answer to the question about resiliency.
Okay.
Where are you getting the lion's share of this electricity?
Um if you will go to that last slide that I have, I didn't, this wasn't part of the presentation, but I bring it just because I might get that question. So this is a the projects that we either are currently um. Current that are our projects either currently online or under development. I will say yellow pine off on the right there. Um status has uh just very recently changed to online. Um most of our projects are in California. You can see that there are some of them uh right up. Maybe just the two right on the outside of the boundary of California. And you can also see this is a, this map has a lot of information um. Store uh just solar or solar plus storage. Um we've got. Uh geothermal Cassidy Casa Diablo up in the upper right. That's a geothermal. And then we have one um. Wind project, mountain view on on the bottom down there in Riverside County. And these are the ones that are um we're already under contract with um our procurement team and. Uh leadership are, I know, and talks with. Many more. This is, this is the key to why we are able to offer uh rates that exceed the or are better than the rates for the I O U by eighteen percent for residential.
So I have this on my computer right here and I'm looking at the same thing and all. All of these are storage, 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 storage. Is this storage coming from? Solar panels and windmills solely? Or is it coming from the existing Pacific uh P G and E? And I'm assuming Southern California Edison.
I apologize. I don't know the answer to that. It's a very good question. Um I'm not sure if. Um the energy is being taken off the grid and stored. Or if it's being produced there um and stored, what what we have contracted for would just be the storage portion. Because there's a, there's a power mix that we need to comply with. Um. Uh we can have all the solar in the world and that we aren't contributing anything at night, then we're out of balance. So um. We have contracted just for the solar portion, but I'm not sure if this, if these solar, um sorry, um storage only. Not sure if these storage projects are adjacent to say a solar farm where uh they're being loaded up right there or if it's coming off the grid. I can certainly find that out for you though.
And kind of the reason I'm asking is because I just did a tour of. Uh Diablo Canyon.
Mm hmm.
And they got a five year extension.
Yes.
Because they realized that if they shut that down, the lights go out. So my question, I guess, was geared to, or is this all the storage coming off the grid, the existing grid?
Well, you can see.
So you don't know.
Definitely not the projects that say solar and storage. But I do not know the answer to that for the projects that say storage only, and I will find out and get back to you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right. Thank you for your presentation.
Well, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And moving on to council item number six, uh consideration of third amendment of city. Manager employment agreement and discussion for salary adjustment for city manager for fiscal year. Twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four, and the lead on this is going to be Linda Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Um June twenty second, in closed session, the council conducted the annual performance evaluation of the city manager. The council approve approved of the city manager's job performance and directed staff to return with an amended contract for discussion in. Open session as required by California law. The city manager has requested that council consider a few amendments to the employment agreement uh that include um. A a few things. So I'm just gonna go through those. Um they were listed. Pretty good detail in the staff report, but I'll just highlight those for you. So the first one is uh the five point six cost of living adjustment that council approved for all regular staff for fiscal year twenty twenty three, twenty four. Um. And that would be an additional eleven thousand one hundred and twenty four dollars annually uh to the budget. And which was already appropriated in the budget as well. And that the city manager received the annual cola approved for all regular staff without separate action from the council each year. So that would be basically put be uh just a new paragraph in there that the city city manager would get the cola that is approved to. All regular staff each year and not having to bring that back to you and ask you for it. And the next one is an increase of three thousand dollars to the city manager's annual travel and training budget. Uh an increase in vacation leave of twenty days per year and increasing the maximum vacation bank. Accrual of up to sixty days per year. Currently in the personnel rules, it's forty days per year is what is the cap that you can accrue. But the city manager is requesting sixty days rather than the forty days. Um and extending the city manager's contract term for seven years and which would expire in June thirtieth, twenty thirty. So again, details are in the staff report and that concludes staff's report and we are available if you have any questions.
Ready, I. What is Scott's current vacation? How many days, Scott?
Fifteen days per year.
So you go to thirty five.
What's that? No, it would be going to twenty.
Twenty.
For the twenty.
Twenty.
Okay.
He could just accrue up to.
Yeah, yeah, I got it. I thought this was an add on. I was a little confused.
Well, son, I had a question about that too. So you you the maximum allowable accrual vacation time is sixty days in total. Okay, so you, yeah, not per year.
Correct.
Yeah, that's what the bank, what you could accrue in. So for.
Every year he gets granted twenty and anything that he doesn't use, he can carry over up to sixty days.
Do you get paid out?
Use it or lose it, right.
Do you get paid out at the end of your contract for those vacation days?
Well, that would be a mask of sixty days.
Yeah, yeah, vacation vacation pays out uh upon upon. Departure.
Okay, right.
Is there a half a day? The sick days go roll into your purse, right?
Uh there's a, there's a portion, I believe, yeah.
No, all sick days roll into your purse. So whatever you accumulate during the time, like when you worked for thirty five years, all of your sick time.
I thought it was only half you could use towards your purse, but that that's what it was when I was.
No, when I did your retirement, I put every hour you had in sick time.
Yeah, I think it's the same with state.
You get a portion of that, so it's a, there, there's a calculation that you get a portion of that toward your retirement, so that's.
The one that the fifteen percent deal is. The extends your. Um enrollment or.
Your service credit, yeah.
Yeah, it just adds on to your service credit, but it but it's a a calculation. But the the more sick time you have, you know, the better, I think.
Right, I just knew that part of that goes into your rule.
Right, right, when you retire.
And additionally, this if it's seven years to extend the contract at twenty thirty.
What what if you retire before then?
Then I would have to, under the terms of the contract, if I wanted to leave ahead of time, I would have to give the city council sixty days notice of departure.
No, you're sick late, but.
So, okay, I will entertain a motion.
Oh, motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay.
And and actually, can we just have it clear that? Since we don't have the contract amendment, to approve the amendment and direct the mayor to sign it once we have the document ready. Thank you.
So edited.
And is your motion with these changes? Just to be clear.
That's in the motion.
Oh, yes. The uh changes.
Yes, yes.
Just to make sure.
Yeah. Okay, council member Hornet.
Aye.
Council member Lewis.
Hi.
Council member Silva.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Sanchez.
Hi.
And everything.
Bye.
Thank you.
Okay, let us move on to the city managers' report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Just a few items for you this evening. The first item is this weekend, uh Saturday, the twenty ninth, from eleven to two at River View Park is. Our annual Beelton barbecue bonanza, a community um. Uh party of sorts. Uh come on out, have a uh tri tip lunch on the city. Uh we will uh a little more diligent this year about making sure that we are, we are serving Beelton residents so that we don't run out of food. Before all of our residents are served. So um a postcard was sent in the mail to most residents, to all residents. Um. If you don't have that postcard for any reason, bring a piece of identification indicating that you do live in the city of Beelton, everything will be fine. So come on out uh this Saturday. Um I will remind the city council that uh there will be no second council meeting in August. Our regular uh. Uh schedule of uh two meetings per month is uh is typically altered during the summer months to allow everyone a little, a little break. Time to take some time off without interrupting council schedules. And this uh year, it's the second meeting in August that we'll miss, so. And then lastly, I wanted to let everyone know the Polo Village project, which is over here off of McMurray Road. Uh the uh the the transaction uh. Uh the 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 sale of that property from the prior property owner to Palm Communities or whatever the name of their. A partnership at this point, uh closed escrow today. Uh they are anticipating grading permits being issued. Uh they may already be issued uh. And uh they would start construction in the very near future. So as you start to see what's going on there. Um and you start to get questions, please refer them to our planning department or to me and I'd be happy to answer those questions for them. Right? And with that, I'll conclude my report.
Okay, and councillor, have anything?
Not a thing, sir. Have a great week.
All right, thank you. Um. And J P I A, is there a big going to that in August? In.
I don't.
Close that.
See, and Carl.
About that.
Mm hmm.
Okay, perfect. Did you see that?
I did see that. I haven't uh haven't been able to figure that out.
Uh what is it, Scott?
Oh.
End of this, right? I think it's a nineteen.
It leads into.
Thirty through the September.
Okay.
September first. Send you Labor Day weekend.
You have not.
Right.
Yep, if you can make that, the J P I As are are great meetings. There's a lot of really good information those people put out. And with that, I will. Close this meeting. Our next meeting will be August tenth, twenty twenty three at six P M.